I will call to order the Select Board meeting for Monday, June 9th, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. We are on Zoom currently. We are being livestreamed on our local cable access and we are being recorded for posting on our YouTube channel. And before we get started, can we have everybody stand for the pledge? My allegiance is to the law.
United States of America. And to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right, I do quickly want to go through minutes and the Treasury warrant payroll. We have Treasury warrant 25-25 and 25-PW-25. Do I have a motion for approval? Hold on. Go for it.
Move to approve Treasury warrant 25-25 and 25-PW-25.
Second. Any discussion? Anything that you're aware of, David, that was out of the ordinary? All right, roll call.
All right. Second, I.
The minute.
Matt's in it.
Ledger, aye. And we have a couple sets of meeting minutes. We have the May 27 regular meeting minutes and the May 27, 2025 executive session. I think at this point for, well, I'll make the recommendation unless there's reason to to approve but not release executive session minutes. If there's any a motion to approve.
You talking about both executive sections?
We can either, they're for the same date, so do we want to take them individually for?
I just, I feel as though the post-meeting could easily be publicized. I don't think that that's anything that's.
The interim town administrator be released.
Yeah.
They're, okay, they're separate, okay, they're the same date, different sets, different sets. That's right, because we break in love. Okay. All right, so.
There's nothing illegal there, so seems reasonable.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the May 27 regular meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Hold on. Second, I.
One minute.
Matt's in it.
Ledger, aye. And then we have two sets of executive session for May 27. So starting with the employment agreement for the interim town administrator, I'll entertain a motion to approve and release the May 27 executive session minutes for the interim town administrator. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Alex?
Hold on.
Second, I.
One minute.
Matt's in it.
Ledger, aye. And then we have the separate set of May 27, 2025 executive session for Watchuset Road discussion. I will entertain a motion to approve but not for release at this time. So moved.
Second motion.
Any discussion? Alex?
All right. Second, I.
One minute.
Matt's in it.
And ledger, aye. Okay. If the board is amenable, just for the interest of time for the people in the audience as well as town council who we have, I'd like to move to the Watchuset Road matter and take that out of order first. If that's amenable to the board. All right, so for, we do have town council, Attorney Lee Smith, thank you for joining us.
Good evening.
We have the matter of Watchuset Road before us. We have numerous, numerous documents that have been sent from various parties to the board. We've got them all collated. They've been disseminated to the board for review. They've been disseminated to town council for review. And this board being a new board and not being as familiar, we were held an executive session at our last meeting just to bring the board up to speed and have some initial discussion on what has taken place thus far. So the goal tonight is to have a little bit more discussion between the board. What I would like to do is clarify that tonight is not a public hearing. It's just an agenda topic for discussion. So what I would like to do is, again, because it's a new board, offer the residents that are here on the matter to have some time to speak on the matter and your position and allow the board some further discussion with town council after that time. So if it's, if you're amenable, I'd like to allot about 10 to 15 minutes for resident discussion. Proposal of the discussion.
Attorney Paul Millbeck of Mr. Melick here. I thought it would be helpful where we have a new board here that we have the engineer who has been working with the town over the last 10 years lay out his position, because this hinges on all of the work he's done. And I believe you've been provided, I know I provided town council with the documentation that shows that in fact it is a public roadway, but I just want him to lay out so that the board members can hear exactly what he did and exactly what was recorded at the Worcester Registry of Deeds. And I think that will be helpful, because it is quite complex. There's a series of minutes that were done by previous select board here, and I think to crystallize and to zero in on what we're here about today. And I think it's going to clarify it. I don't think really opinions of various members are going to be that helpful. It's really a legal question. And I think if he can shed some light on the process so the board can grasp the issue. And then I have some documentation that I would just like to point out and focus upon after he finishes his presentation. And then I would propose that anyone else that wants to speak about this, has personal knowledge on it, can. But I think rather than duplicate it, because we're going to have a lot of similar stories with different owners here, that he can zero right in on what he did and what step, what was communicated to him by previous select boards, by the previous town DPW head, and where we stand today at this point in time. If that's acceptable, Paul.
I don't want to spend a lot of time rehashing what was said at past meetings. I think we just want to state what your position is as the owners and your understanding and then have that, the board have, you know, whatever questions the board may have, and then have board discussion with town council as far as what we want to pursue for guidance.
Fine.
Okay. My name is Julian Votrova from New England Environmental Design. My part in this is, I'm a, I own a land surveying engineering company. I'm the manager. And we started this project in 2020. Mrs. Arley called me and we went through a Form A, no approval required process. So I've been doing this since 1986, so this is a very standard format. The first thing we do is when we get a piece of property is we go to the town clerk to get a listing of public, private road, what the road is. I did that before we did anything. I got a response from the town clerk, Anita Carlson, that this is a public road and it's on a actual, on a list that's public for anyone to view. And I saw that and they said, okay. So that's where we start. We also, so we started doing some work on the perimeter of the property and at the same time talking with Joe Buckley from the DPW. He in turn hired a survey company to survey the Watchuset Road layout. That was done conjunction, in the same time that I was doing my work on the property. That plan was completed and recorded. So I was able to take that plan and tie my perimeter to the established plan that's on file at the Worcester Registry of Deeds as a public road. We then went to the planning board, had a hearing. The board voted to endorse the plan. The plan was then recorded at the Worcester Registry of Deeds and now is a document of a public road with lots created off of it. That without the endorsement from the planning board, that could not be recorded at the registry. They will not record a plan that's not endorsed by the local planning board. And for the local planning board to endorse the plan, they have to make sure certain features and facts are on that plan. And one is, is it a public road? Or I can't have frontage. So that's the process we went through and that's where we're at. Thank you.
Just, I have just a short summary, I realize this is a legal question. I believe they provided you with, the owner has provided you with a new map, a new reduction map, which is a 1956 map here. And that map specifically shows that on the map in 1956, it's entitled Watchuset Mountain Mass. It shows the roadway between Princeton and Rutland. The Princeton line is here, shows it running it through the entire area. It's named at the beginning from the Princeton side of Brook Station Roadway. And this is a 1956 map here. So there's a lot of history on here and I know there's been other documents admitted, but this is a recorded plan based back to 1956. In addition, when the town went in and they actually did an official survey to determine the dimensions of the roadway, there's a package that we've submitted in to evidence. And this was provided not by the owners, but this was provided by the town's agent. It was signed off by two official individuals here. The highway official, DPW director, Joseph Buckley. And this was signed on September 23 of 2020. It was also signed by the town accountant. And what this was, was this is a reimbursement from the district highway for the state of Massachusetts for public funds. And under, the certification specifically reads, it was a $9,400 allotment here, and the specific certification under penalties of perjury reads as follows. "The design, engineering, construction, and future performance of the project, including maintenance, is a responsibility of the municipality. The proposed work will conform to recognized engineering and construction methods. I hereby certify on the penalty of perjury the following: That the project is on a public way and any necessary takings have been made; That all materials will comply with approved established specifications; That all weights and quantities will be accurate; And equipment rental rates, those established by Mass DOT Highway are advertised low bid; That all documentation will be checked for accuracy and will be endorsed in accordance with municipal procedures for accountability." That was in fact signed off on, it was signed off also by the state on 9/30 of 2020. So my client, clients have both purchased lots. They've relied upon public documents that are on record at the Registry of Deeds. They've got a title report from their attorney when they closed on this property. They intend to construct two homes on this land. All the public documentation, the town, the representations that were made by the town up until the point where this one person, this one person has raised an issue, they've always known it to be a public roadway. And that's what we're resting it on. Everything that's been filed with the town, with the Registry of Deeds indicates that it is a public roadway. And at this point in time, we'd like to know from the select board, I know you're going to consult with town council, but my clients have significant amount of money invested. They purchased the lots, they've constructed, they've cleared, they've constructed a driveway. And time is passing, we're into, almost into the summer, and they want to really get started with the actual construction. And in order to get started with the actual construction, we would need a building permit and we would also need an indication where it's a public roadway, where we need authorization from the board of selectmen to have the power lines extended along this public roadway. It's just a matter of course that's required. It's pretty standard protocol. So that's why we're here tonight on behalf of Mr. Melick and his son with respect to those two particular lots. We'd like to get moving, obviously, as soon as possible. He's out of pocket substantial monies for the purchase and for the construction that's occurred to date. So I will rest and let the other individuals interested parties raise. They probably have more background knowledge on this than we have, but, you know, I'm convinced on the documentation that I've seen here that it's clearly represented as a public roadway, based on what I reviewed to date. And I thank the board.
Hi. Karen Votrova in 153, 153, East Hill Road in Oakham. And I have J&amp;K Ventures and we've acquired properties on Watchuset Road. And it's time that, I'm currently at the point of moving forward with my investment there. What I'm looking for is for the town of Rutland to resume maintenance on the roadway and remove the road is not maintained signs from the roadway, because it's detrimental. And the property I own, like was spoken of, is on a plan recorded at the Registry of Deeds on a public road. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Wild, 24 Barrack Hill Road, Rutland. I'm also the licensed contractor that has applied for permit on 9 Watchuset Road. And I've been denied by the town that permit. Okay. Reasons being denied, the road is impassable, can't get emergency vehicles in, that type of thing. From what I've heard, I also grew up in town, I have a house on Barrack Hill that was in a similar situation. The town abandoned it till I bought a lot down there. After I bought a lot down there, Kyle Christensen was the DPW guy at the time, says, oh, it looks like we're going to have to stop maintaining it. Sounds like in what we've got, and I don't know how town council feels, it is a municipals' project and you should be maintaining that road. Time's money. We've got rates, we've got all kinds of things we're trying to hold on to here. I've been into this project since February. It's costing them money to have me retained. I'd just like to get along with the project and I don't understand why my permit's being held up on something that was supposedly settled years ago. Thank you.
My name is Jay Melick. I'm, my son and I are one of the two people who purchased a lot on the road. My son is the person who was building first on a lot, I think it's number 4N. And in good faith, of course, I purchased and this, I think it's been put out, I got the necessary title and everything done in a proper manner. I was told you need to have a well before you can apply for permit. Well, we got a well, it was $25,000, because we hit some ledge, we had to frac it, trucks got stuck in the road. People weren't happy with me about getting this, the truck's stuck, we had to get it towed out on some occasions. We cleared, cleared the lot, did a lot of prep. Rented probably $50,000, applied for building permit and was told you're going to have power and the road's not accessible. Now, it would seem as if you got one swing at this thing. I mean, we were told first time, you need, you need water. Now, I've known that, I've been in the architectural business all my life. You can't build on a lot without water, you wouldn't want to anyways. But the same would apply for power. And, and I know someone who works for the National Grid who told me that he could be dispatched immediately, right out there. He says he's, you know, he's, he would just have to, I believe, would have to come through, you know, you for the purpose, because you'd have to be tying in, I think it Ridge Road is what he told me, so that would involve the town. But, but we have lost a lot of time. I started, started this project getting architectural plans done back in September. And it's hard to believe, it's nine months. Used to be, it wouldn't be nine months to build a house. And nine months to get a permit, but. That's about Jay Melick, by the way, from 80 Salisbury Street, Worcester. I should have said that first. Thank you.
Anita, I know, I know you have a lot of information. We have everything, so I'm, I don't.
I was, I was just going to say quickly that as town clerk, our office has 55 pages that you have of documentation.
Yeah, the board has all that, so we, and we've had time to review that and that's been sent to town council.
And we also number, our office numbers the streets and we did number it a few years ago.
Are there any more comments from any of the impacted residents here for Watchuset Road?
Hi, I'm Carlos Zottoli, one of the owners. I just, I didn't, I don't know what you got or what you didn't for documentation, so I just went through and made packages for all of you that have every single document from 1986 until now that has said in each of your meetings over and over again. So it's here, if you need it, all ready for you, all highlighted.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other comments or anything from the residents, I'd like to allow the board some discussion time between the board members and questions for town council. Again, we had talked about, we have numerous, numerous documents, pages and pages of documents that have come from residents here, from other residents in town. We have the meeting minutes for many, many meetings where this has been discussed in the past. All this information has been sent to town council who has reviewed. And I just want to confirm that any of the information that we've received since our previous meeting was all previously known information. I believe there wasn't anything new since the executive session that we held back on the 27th and that it was still the position that we did not have sufficient evidence to indicate that Watchuset Road was unequivocally a public road. Does that sound accurate to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. I will open it up to the board for any discussion or questions for council.
Through the chair. Whoever chooses to answer this question. It was brought to our attention that in 1956, the Worcester County Commissioners altered the layout of a road identified as Watchuset Road. That was not brought up. What, what is your feeling on legality after the commissioner reworked that, that it still should be a public road?
I have, my name is Bill Zottoli. Obviously, I'm one of the owners of the property. I have a map here, geographical survey from Washington, which shows the town of Rutland and all existing roads. And it happens to be dated 1956, which obviously shows the road. If you would like, could I bring it to you?
Yeah, my only question is, is it before or after the commissioners changed?
That's a good question. I don't know what the date of the commissioner was.
I don't know.
And I don't really know, I don't see where that would actually affect the existence of the road in the first place.
You're saying it's a road by the map, but the commissioner is saying that they've kind of detached that road, which wouldn't be on the map, if I'm reading that correctly, so.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure that that's a correct, a correct judgment of that.
And again, I'm not assuming anything.
I don't think that's accurate.
Because I'm going through the attorney.
I can see what you're saying and I know they, but the road was never closed. I don't think that has anything to do with the fact.
What does kind of detached mean?
Because the town.
What does kind of detached mean? The gentleman said kind of detached. Explain kind of detached.
It was our understanding that in 1956, that what is being referred to as Watchuset Road, in 1956, the county commissioners essentially moved that portion to what is now Watchuset Street.
Yes, but in 1986, that's 20 years later, 56, 76, yeah, 86, the road was on the town warrant to discontinue. I sent a lawyer's letter to the select board, Mr. Alanovi, at that time. And I have a copy, I suppose you have a copy.
Documentation is all in here, it's all in here.
It's all in there. And unanimously, they did not discontinue the road. So in 1986, the town of Rutland agreed that that was a town road. And it never changed then. The town clerk, Anita, looked into the vault and found the result of that meeting, that town meeting in 19 January or December of 1986. And it was a town road. So I don't think that in 1956, just because the county commissioner made a cut, cut through, that that road necessarily should have been, or was closed, it wasn't.
If I may address a question to town council. If we have, just to confirm, everything that we have here, whether there was discussion two years ago or back in 1986 with regards to this warrant that are stating that it was a public road, none of that discussion actually makes this a public road in the eyes of, from a legal perspective. That's correct?
That is correct.
Done, okay. So it was with regards to the 1986 public meeting, if the Watchuset Road had in fact been moved, relocated to the current Watchuset Street, anything that took place at the 1986 town meeting essentially would have been null and void, because it was not actually a public road, even though nothing was actually voted on. It would have been null and void, is that correct?
Yes, if the county commissioners acted to relocate the road, the effect of the remaining area would be discontinuance of it as a county way.
And then if, but for what Mr. Zottoli is saying with the 1986 town meeting to vote to discontinue that, if it wasn't actually, it would have no effect, because it wasn't actually a public road at that time. Okay. I just wanted to.
What is that based on?
In 2020, one of his colleagues from his same firm did all the research and the town council said this is a road. They already did this research.
They did.
I would like to defer to town council on that. From everything that we have seen as far as the documentation, we don't have the documentation from town council that it's a public road.
Let me give you the handouts that the owner has tended this evening. What you have and what you don't have, I'm not clear to, based on the discussions to date. But let me, did you read your package? And I would suggest that history review, so the town council on it, because this has a historical background.
I would like to say one other thing. I have this document here, which was from Joe Buckley when he went to get the $9,000 for surveying of the road. At that time, at the bottom of this, he consulted whoever the lawyer was at that time for the town. And this is what the lawyer said. He said, like any other road, you look out for excessive grade and line of sight. Counsel, this is what, it's right here in this letter. Counsel suggested we restore it to its original intended functional state. A local gravel road in a farm, community, in a farm, community, best example I could give you would be Sasso-Wana and Charnock Hill. They, there are lots of standards for subdivision roads and new highways, but not for local gravel roads. Town, the town council at that time agreed and talked about what the road should be. So I don't understand why all of a sudden this town council is saying a whole different thing. I do not believe that that's right. It's wrong. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Julian Votrova from New England Environmental Design. In 19, I believe it was 1956, that county commissioner, this is a deed, recorded and it names not just Watchuset Road as on the list of roads to be discontinued or abandoned, but there's five or six roads. The road that Mr. Wild lives on was on it, that's not gone. Shana Hill from Main Street going down towards where Blair's Gut Bryce Estates. That section of road is not gone. The only one that was taken off was the one going up towards Devereaux, beyond the turn going up the hill to Devereaux, continued along the railroad to the house that's there. In that deeded document, and I will get a copy for the board, I don't have it with me here, from the county commissioners, reported at the registry, there was only one road, a decree was made that took it off of the town public road status. I believe there were seven of them, seven different roads. And all of the other seven roads are fully developed at this point, so.
I don't think we can say to the, what the other roads are, they're not part of this particular discussion, the circumstances.
But it's in that same letter that you're saying that the county commissioners.
Circumstances could be very different, though. I don't, we don't know any of this.
It's the exact same deed.
I would like to keep the discussion centered on Wachusett Road specifically.
But that was on, when you said the county commissioners. There's such a thing as equal protection, both in our state constitution and our federal constitution. They've shown you and they've disclosed the policy that's being followed by the town prior to this board. And clearly, if you look at all the adoption of records, you can go back and say, well, this wasn't met, that wasn't met. It appears to me from looking at the total picture here, previous town council, it's probably a different law firm, came up with a totally different opinion. And that's often the case. You can have 10 different lawyers and get 20 different opinions. We're saying that based on the historical records here, that he has in his file, the representations that were made by town that are public documents. This idea of the town finding on a letter, okay, really doesn't control legally. The legal control is what this town approved. You approved, the town planning board approved it as an ANR lot. We have a sworn statement under penalties of perjury that this is a public roadway. That should end it. There shouldn't be any more discussion on anything. We have a sworn statement from your agent, not our agent, not our engineer. This is from your Board of Health, your DPW Commissioner and the Treasurer, stating that this is a public roadway. We've taken $9,500 from the state of Massachusetts under the penalties of perjury. This should be ended there. There shouldn't be any further discussion. It's there, it's been that way, it's been recorded at the registry. My clients, who had no historical reference or relationship with this property, purchased it based on legal documents that are on file at the Registry of Deeds. They have an ANR plan, they have, they did, checked off all the boxes. So how we can discuss now whether or not, back in 1956, I don't think that's applicable. And how do we know, sitting here, this history goes way back, I believe into the 1800s, what was established? But clearly, it was on the map in 1956. It shows the entire roadway being on that map, the historical map. And I think you have to look, and a court will look at it. If you get, if the board doesn't want to look at it, town council doesn't want to evaluate it. I know higher up, there is such a thing as precedent, there's a stoppable. If you treat roadways a certain way, then you have to continue to treat, everyone's going to be treated equally. It's our position here that based upon the historical records here, this is a public roadway. And on behalf of my two clients, I'm trying to get basically some head, some direction from the board as far as what the board's going to require through town council as far as how do we get this building permit to mitigate our damages, number one. And number two, how do we get the electrical power in the most, you know, timely way so that we can go ahead with this construction? I should point out, though, this is going to generate for the town. You've got potentially 14 lots here. It taxes, it's going to be a substantial tax bill for anyone that's down there. So this idea that, you know, what we were looking at, if you look at the engineer's recommendation, the DPW Commissioner, he said there was just basically, what he recommended was, I think the installation of eight or 10 inches of gravel according to town standards. That was it. They're not looking for anything else. So that gravel, and I think the cost he had, it may be a little bit more, I think he estimated in his earlier minutes that it was about $20,000. So if you divide 20,000 by 14 lots, it's still a great deal for the town to see what this is going to consist. We're in a housing crisis in Massachusetts. They just approved in August of this year, in August of 2024, anyone in this room can build a second residence without coming to any board in the town as an accessory dwelling structure. So if you have a house, an acre lot or two acres, you can build by right up to 900 square feet. I'm just pointing this out because it's, it's the background on these cases. We've got a party here who's put in good faith. He's already been held up for six months. We're trying to get this resolved. I've reached out to town council, we're trying to get it resolved without litigation. Because I think in all fairness, if you look at someone that was in their position and bought two lots here, they bought it according to documents. We've got titled certificate, we've got everything, they checked off all the boxes. In addition, there's multiple representations from prior town council that this was in fact a public roadway. So I think we're just looking for some basic fairness here. We're not asking the board for any special treatment or anything like that. This is what you have, a consistent policy with these other roadways that were in similar states, and that was what was decided at this point. And I think from a legal standard, from legal equal protection, people have to be treated fairly. My client did everything he should, went to the Registry of Deeds, saw the statements, the town survey was on record, you, not your board, but the prior board authorized $9,500 for this formal survey. Everything's on record. I, I think that a third, a trier of fact would look at this a lot differently. And I think at the end of the day, we're just looking for authorization for that building permit to issue, number one, and for power to be there so that our clients can build. This is not a speculative venture. My client wants to live in this town, okay? It's a young couple, he and his wife, they want to build a residence for themselves. They've spent significant personal funds, they've been held up now since January. So we're trying to reach out to the town to see if we can come to some type of a resolution that's fair to all parties. And I think everything that we've seen so far indicates that at the crux of the matter, is it or is it not a public roadway? The town has informed multiple parties and the records indicate earlier, prior to town, this, this particular town council, that they did in fact deem it to be a public roadway. I don't, I just don't think you can remove that where the town has already taken an official position that my clients have relied upon.
I would, I would like to just limit the discussion to the board now, again and again with town council. And again, I would like to make the statement that any past statements or any actions that were taken in prior meetings, prior meeting minutes, anything that was actually even physically done to the road, does not in and of itself make it a public road. And I would also like to just confirm, council if I may, that the survey that was done and recorded at the Registry of Deeds also does not make it a public way.
That's correct.
So again, with the information presented to the board and at the guidance of town council, it still seems like there's a question of whether or not it is truly a public way, which is the crux of the issue for this board to address. As far as the building permit side, access to the road, that's not necessarily anything that this board has control over. Even reinstating maintenance on it would not necessarily have any impact on, on, on anything. So I just want to make sure that right now, we're at the point of, is this a public road or is it not? And we don't, again, as of right now, have sufficient evidence that we've been presented with, had town council review, to state that as, as the case. Is there any board member that would like to add to that or change?
We talked a little bit last week about the cost. Did we ever look into or get an estimate? I know that there's an old estimate there that just got brought up.
I had actually reached out to Director Kolofsky for some information. He gave a rough estimate of what it would take to gravel it, but there was no clarification on whether or not that included accounting for drainage or bringing it up to actual, the same standards as something like Sassa Wana or Britnall. What was the width of that? If that was just enough to make it passable, which was some of the earlier discussion in the past meetings? So I don't think we can say we have an accurate estimate what it would cost to, to do that.
Yes, I'm, I'm not sure that that plays into whether, I'm, in my opinion, it doesn't play into whether it's a town road or not.
Correct.
I mean, that would be a consideration potentially down the line, but I, I mean, the documentation that we have seems to be pretty, um, pretty convincing that the county commissioners discontinued it. And I don't see anything, even the 1956 map. I would assume it, and again, I'm assuming, which may not be correct, but that it would take a year, at least a year to update any sort of map. And based on the documentation that we have from the end of 1956, I don't know that that would be.
Can, can you provide that document right now to show us? 1956, that the commissioner say it was discontinued? Where is this document that you're talking about?
This was.
It's, and anything that we've had in our, our records that we have through, that's been collected over the years.
Sure, you keep, you just made a decision that it's not, there's not enough evidence to say it's a public road with one specific document, and I'm asking to see that document, and no one has it.
I'm sure.
We've got all this testimony, all this information. As a, as a owner of a land surveying engineering company since 2004, the first thing I do is go to the town clerk. Town clerk stated, written document, that it's a public road.
If I may, Mr. Voltruba, if I may, Mr. Voltruba, again, what we have is, is again, per this board, we're not finding that it's conclusive. There have been many times over the last several years where it has been stated to be a public road, but I think there's conflicting evidence, and that's what this board is looking at. That it's, we can't unequivocally show that it is. If there's information out there.
There's not a murder trial here.
I understand that, but this is, this is something that we have to do, that we're, we're being requested to bring it up to speed with standards? Do we bring it up to, to standard codes? We don't have anything, to my knowledge, of what standards for gravel roads would be and what that condition would be. There's the future maintenance of the road, all things that this board needs to consider. And we're not saying it would never happen. It's just a matter of right now, we need the determination of whether or not it's a public road. And this board, again, I don't want to speak for everybody, but we are not seeing that there's evidence that's conclusively stating it's a public road. And that's what we're looking for right now.
Here's the trouble.
If I, excuse me, I, I don't want to, everybody is, we, I understand it's very.
No, it's not right.
So what, if the board has any other questions for the board or for town council, I'm happy to entertain those, otherwise if nobody has. You know, we have a packet of information here, which of course, we're, we can certainly send to town council to see if there's anything new in here. Everything looks like something we've already seen. We do have guidance from town council with everything that we've received to date. So we can either send the information to have council review and see if there's anything new, or we have a, I'll entertain a motion for next steps, which we have in our, based on town council guidance.
Can I just ask another question of, of our concern here? I, I, obviously very new, right? There's costs associated with this, we're already a cost crunch, I understand that. The whole town is looking for every penny we can find. Is there concern outside of the cost of this and the upkeep and the maintenance from the town's perspective? Is there concern other than the cost of bringing it up to standard? What it would take to do that, of course. I get that we don't, we're not entirely sure with what that standard is, but obviously that would come with cost. And then maintaining the road, of course, again, comes with costs. Is there a concern outside of those, a cost perspective that I'm just missing?
I think the other concern is if it, has it been laid out as a public way? If it was truly moved, not necessarily discontinued, or I guess that is, if it was discontinued and moved to current Wachusett Street, we need to lay it out as a public way to have it documented as such and have it properly recorded that way.
That for me, signed by the planning board, laid it out as a public way.
We're having the board discussion, please.
So in order to do that, though, that's just on our, that's for us to do as a town, and as a board.
As, it would, I think, it would have to, I believe Attorney Jenny, that it would have to go through town meetings. If, it's like any other, if it's not a public way, a current public way, it would have to go as any other subdivision road or anything, come through the board, refer to planning board for public hearing, and then referred back to select board to be placed on a, on a war, a town meeting warrant for the legislative body to correct.
The board would actually review the plan and look at the specifics of the, of the plan in terms of, is it proper in terms of the layout? It has to be up to a certain engineering standard, just the math so much. And you approve the layout and then it gets put on town meeting as an article to lay the way out as a public road.
This has already been approved. You can't go back.
We're, we're having the board discussion at this time. We're not going to entertain any more public comment, thank you.
Shame on you.
So through the chair.
Please.
I'm having a very difficult time looking at all this information, saying whether it is a public or it isn't a public, even with the new information I got. There's comments in here by public works directors that say that the town was already, that road was already closed. Right here, in the paperwork that was given to me. There's town that say that we discontinued maintenance on it. If it was a town road, we were not responsible for the upkeep. So I, I, I think personally, with the information we've given tonight, we need to digest this more and look at it. I don't know, is we even going to offer an opinion tonight from my personal perspective? I still, I went through, I went through the other information initially over and over again, and I could find no information in it that said it was definitely yes or no a public road, because there were a lot of comments on both. So I'm, I think our legal team needs to help us understand a little bit more some of the words and the definitions here. I'm not opposed to it or for it. I mean, this is, whatever, whatever is legal is legal. That's what I'm saying. I just need more information, I mean, more discussion.
Thank you. And, and I think, and I have no problem sending this to, to council to see if there's anything new in it. But again, based on what we know right now, again, we're not saying that this would not be a public way or that if it's found to be, that we would not take steps to do whatever is responsible of the town to, to do. But we need that proof here. And it's, at this point, with all the discussion that's gone on, it, it's, it's, I think my opinion, and again, I'm not just going to speak for the board, that we have done all the research that we have at this point and found no evidence of that. And then council has advised that it's, it's on the parties that are asserting that it's a public road to provide that proof. So that, I think, is where we're going, which, we have all this information, but it needs to come from the, the other side.
We're, so we're saying we're going to take that information, that they say it's a public road, which they've done their due diligence on it, and that we're going to work with legal on it to see if that's where it works.
I, I think I'm saying, I mean, we have a potential motion that we could make with our position, and then it would be up to the parties asserting that it's a public road to provide proof, not our town council to review and provide that proof.
Well, I guess my only question is, having the town council review their information that we were submitted to let us know their opinion on it, on this new stuff that we just got?
Again, I can send it if we're not comfortable moving forward with this tonight.
I've looked through it quickly.
But it looks like it's all the same information that we already have.
It's, well, it's really not, but okay. There are lots of comments, lots of, lots of issues that refer back to certain things, different DPW chairs, different board meetings, all that stuff in the documentation we got, so. I can't, I can't, I can't realistically make a decision tonight and be fair, one side or the other.
I mean, I think for me personally, I looked through the, the information. Thank you for providing the packet. And I don't see anything that I haven't seen already. The only piece that I hadn't necessarily seen specifically was the color 1956 map. But other than that, everything, it's just different bits and pieces highlighted that speaks to. But I, I do want to point out that in email correspondence that we have provided, we have provided previously, as well as that we were just given tonight, it said from our town council, it says, in some, there is no evidence in the materials I was able to review that Wachusett Road is a public way in the town. And going back to the 1986 town meeting, it wasn't that there was no, that they voted that it was a town road, they voted to not take any action on that article. So there's unfortunately not any more minute, meeting minutes to discuss, to address why they vote, made that motion and vote to, uh, take no action. But that's what the motion was. So it wasn't that it was discussed and they declared that it was a town road, that they voted no action, period.
May I say something to clarify?
May I say something to clarify for the people here? Even if we wanted to move this forward, it sounds like we can't. Am I understanding that? Maybe that's a question for the attorney, I.
We could certainly have the discussion and, and direct the DPW to make whatever improvements. I think it's just, again, not knowing what the specific layout of, we have the survey, but as far as the maintenance and the cost and whose responsibility lies with bringing that road up to code conditions for, for what it's being used for, where does that responsibility lie?
So that goes back to my point, that's really our concern. Our concern is the cost of the maintenance and bringing it up to standard.
And making sure that we have proper documentation, that it's a true public way, that it's been laid out.
Could we get a proper estimate of what it would cost as a, as a
I think part of the, the question there too, though, is what it, if, even if it were deemed a public way, what is the town responsible for? Is it just making sure that a car could get down it? Is it, do we have to bring it up to, do we have to pave it? Do we have to bring it up to modern standards?
Is that so on a page?
And that's a question of whether or not, again, and I think it's, again, the guidance of town council that the first step, if we are to do that, is to have it proven to be a public way of which the burden lies with the people that are asserting that it's a public way.
We gave you proof, you don't like it.
Can I say something, please?
We're, we're having board discussion, we're, no more public comment.
And then after we have your discussion, let me say something.
That's an awful lot of new information that the public would like to comment on.
I think for me personally, it's also, um, I think in town, we sometimes haven't been good about enforcing, making sure that we're allowing building on town roads or that they're properly vetted town roads. And so for me, it's a little bit of a precedent piece as far as ensuring that any development now or future is, um, either if they're private ways, that they're, they're private ways and clearly defined. Because we still get pushback on private ways that developers had promised that they would become public with pressure on the board and everything. So for me, it's more just ensuring that we're, if we say it's a private way or a public way, that it's a public way, and that if it needs to go before town because it's, right, that the town is okay with that.
So if there's, again, I think from two ways to go, we have guidance from town council with everything that they've reviewed up until this point. We have a recommendation that we can adopt with regards to that, or if the board would rather, with the information that's been presented in the folders tonight, we can forward that to town council to see if there's any new information that would change their guidance and recommendation for this board.
Should definitely be, yeah, it should, I mean, definitely should be provided to our town council, for sure, to make sure that it's consistent with the current decision. Absolutely what we need to do.
Is that agreeable?
Oh, do you have any?
I'm just looking in, I, I'm wondering whether the MGL that we accepted on March thirty-first is one that is going to cover this situation adequately and make the road then acceptable all the way through.
What MGL?
Eighty-seven, I believe it is, subs, uh, subs twenty-one and twenty-two. Was, it was, we passed it on March thirty-first of this year.
He's talking about the street acceptance policy?
Oh, street, no, I don't think that would, that's just a street accept, the process to go through for street acceptance versus.
Well, this is what, this is what it outlines, yes. But this is what, what I have to think about, what's, what's got to be done with that process.
If we need to lay it out as, if it's not currently a public way, correct, yes. All right, so it sounds like, if I'm hearing correctly, the board would prefer to send the latest information to town council to see if they revise any guidance or recommendations, does that sound?
And then also like, if I may, I'd also like clarification, if they can dig up more information on the nineteen fifty-six Worcester County Commissioners altered layout of the road identified as Wachusett Road, because the summary suggests one thing. And so I'd like clarification on that, if they could give us that.
Tamika, I don't think we need a motion for that. Just in case, okay. All right, then, do we, just to have it, do we want to entertain a motion?
I would move to, to send the provided packet from the Zaltleys to town council for a review to ensure that there's not, to see if there's, to see if there's any additional information and to ask town council for any clarifying comments or information they can provide regarding the nineteen fifty-six Worcester County Commissioners altered layouts of Wachusett Road.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion tonight? All right, roll call, Alex.
All right. Second line.
Web and I.
That's in.
Ledger, I. All right, so we will have town council review further information and move from there.
While we have town council here tonight, if I may, I contacted their office recently and I said, they said that you needed to authorize me to be able to speak with him. So I just wanted to confirm that, is that admissible?
I. David, am I permitted to confer with you on the correspondence between the attorneys? Or does that need to be aborted?
I, I honestly don't know, to tell you the truth.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I mean, chair previously, or is this?
Attorney Smith, yes, please.
Thank you, through you. So any, any correspondence between town council and the select board, where other town officials is protected by the attorney-client privilege, your board can elect to waive that privilege and release that documentation, but you'd have to go through that step in order to make it available.
Okay.
Is that what you asked?
Which is, which is different than allowing communication, you know, phone conversation and so. Just talking about prior, prior written communication between town council and your board.
We're not seeking that. I had reached out to them with some additional information. I think it would be helpful on both sides if we find additional information with respect to this nineteen fifty-six matter. My only other point to town council, where we have him this evening, is what is your position or the town, your recommendation with respect to the sworn statement under oath by the town official and the town treasurer? In order to get state funds, they'd signed it under penalties of perjury, that this is a public roadway. And that was signed by DPW, the DPW Commissioner, and also by the town treasurer, the town of Rutland. And that's in your, I believe it's in your package that we provided to the town and to your office with respect to that documentation.
I think, I think that's something that we're going to want to take back and refer.
Okay, I'm just, that's my concern here, because I have plans that are, you know, as each day goes on, they're suffering damages, and I'm trying to get this resolved in a timely, you know, timely fashion. I understand the board's concerns, but I think there's some concerns here that maybe they didn't know about until this latest information came in relatively recently with respect to this. So I think that if, if, if the board has no objection to me reaching out to town council if I get additional documentation, I want to reach out to the title company on this to see what I can get from background. But I will tell the board that everything that I've reviewed so far on this, it was above board with respect to the purchase and all the back title work. There's no indication that it's anything but a public roadway, and that's where we're coming from.
Understood, and I, again, I don't, I don't want to rehash everything. We've, we've got a board motion right now to, to get some more information with the latest information, and we'll, we'll see what we receive from town council.
When will the next meeting be, if I may? But will you have it?
June twenty-third, but we need to see what, there's no guarantee, I don't have a guarantee yet that we would have an agenda item on that. We need to have town council.
Follow up within the town for the agenda item?
Yes.
Thank you.
You would be in touch with David or the town administrator, right?
Yeah, with the, with the office. Well, once we have information brought back before, when we have information to discuss to bring back to the, the board, we'll make sure that that's communicated.
Fine, now, if, I know there was a statement earlier that you don't have, you know, any bearing on the building permit or electrical, but as I understand it, that's the reasons, and that's not within the parameters of the actual building inspector. He would issue it but for these two items. So I guess that's my only point here, that I think this board does have some input that's necessary before we can get to that building permit issue based upon the correspondence that was provided to the building, Mac Wild.
Understood, but one step at a time, so we'll, we'll see what we have here, and we'll bring everything, new information back to the board and next steps at that point.
Thank you.
If I may, just for clarification, is the board giving permission for Attorney Novak to directly communicate with our town council? If I understand correctly, that's, that's what your question is, so I just want to document that.
I, I, I think at this point, I have no concerns with information being sent, but as far as any communication, I think we need to make sure that that comes through, David.
We get copied by the board at least.
Right. No back and forth, I think at this point, we need to, new information needs to come in through the office to be funneled through town council.
And I'd just like to clarify, if I may, it, it keeps being referenced that the, it was the DPW director and the treasurer that were signed off on it, and it's the DPW, the former DPW director and the former town accountant, not the treasurer. I just want to make sure that. Okay, um, we are going to move back onto our agenda. I, I, we're not going to be entertaining any more public, it's not a public hearing, we're, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. We have.
We like to request a public hearing. When, when can we have a public time to speak?
Any request can be sent through the office.
You mean, this citizen didn't even get to speak?
I, it was offered opportunity, we've.
No, he didn't get, you didn't get.
I had offered the opportunity at the beginning to allow the residents to speak. Many got up and spoke. The board has made a motion at this point. I don't think anything is going to change with regards to that, so there will be no more public comment. I'm moving on to the adjustment, the, moving through again on the agenda into our public comment section. Is there anybody here for public comment?
Is this, if there's, is there any comment associated with Wachusett Road? I mean, for, can we get public comment with this?
I think, I think the board has kind of completely covered what the issues are, and I think at this point, it's important that council take a look at the information and assess what that information is and how it impacts the central decision to either be a public way or not. I think at this point, I think we're all waiting, we'll be waiting for council to review the document.
Can he speak at public comment, though?
Anybody can speak at public comment.
All right, then, actually, if I'm, if I may, since we have Attorney Smith here, I think since we are closed on the agenda item, are we good with letting the town council exit?
I, I believe, we're closed, yeah. I guess we don't need him for anything else.
So I think, Attorney Smith, thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
One of, one of the intents of having a public comment period is to allow people who aren't formally on the agenda to come to a meeting and be able to express an issue that they're dealing with and ask from the board specifically to consider it, not that this is going to be a full discussion of that item this night, but to consider putting it on, number one, if it's legitimate, number two, a decision to put it on a future meeting that, that would get all the necessary backgrounds required. This is exclusive of Wachusett Road. I'm just saying, if somebody came in and said, Jesus, I got a street light out, and can you help me with this? I approached this person, they said, no, I can't do it. They come in and we say, all right, this is not something we're prepared to discuss tonight, but it is something that we would be willing to put on the next agenda to discuss with not only the pitcher, but anyone that didn't properly address whatever they concerned.
All right, so I will open it for public comment, then. Name an address.
Michael Voltruba, sixty-eight B Campbell Street. And I guess I had a question when it comes to hiring out a legal attorney, KP Law. KP Law made a decision on that last, or provided advice on that last discussion item in two thousand and twenty-two. What brought the board to go seek additional advice when they already had advice stating that Wachusett Road is a public way and advised that if the board of selectmen voted to discontinue maintenance of Wachusett Road, it would remain a public way? Why are we all of a sudden looking into it again now, spending my tax dollars, a few people in here's tax dollars, to look into the same issue a second time? Is it because somebody didn't like it? Was it one person from the public? Was it the board itself? Or is there no reason whatsoever?
One person.
And was all information investigated? Is it thorough? Because it sounds like in two thousand and twenty-two, there was not due diligence done if, if, if what they're finding now is different, and how many times are we going to pay for the same work in this town?
Being public comment, it's, again, as, as the town administrator stated, just to take information back, not necessarily for the board to comment on.
Perfect.
We had the discussion, so we, I think the board has their position.
Beautiful. During the last discussion item, I forget who on the board made the discussion, mentioned that the client's council will have to review and provide proof of their side of things. Again, town taxpayer, it sounds like that's going to go down a road that I don't want to see it go down as a taxpayer, because I don't want to have us having back and forth with lawyers. It sounds like there's enough evidence to go the other way to me, from what I've heard, but I haven't seen everything you guys have. But does that mean the town goes to court? And I know it's just comment, but that's just something I'd like to ask. And was town council now versus two thousand and twenty-two? It was the same people, I believe. I guess that's all I have for the moment.
Is there anyone else here present for public comment? All right, then I will move forward with our communications, member comments announcements, and town administrator update. I just want to formally introduce David Demange, who is our interim town administrator. He will be with us for the next six months as we are transitioning to another permanent town administrator. He'll be assisting in that search, so I just wanted to say welcome to David. A few other, just quick chair updates. I just wanted to say congratulations to the Wachusett High School class of two thousand and twenty-five. Graduation ceremonies were last Thursday. We have, next Monday, June sixteenth, is the last day of school for the rest of the Wachusett schools. So just, everybody keep an eye out, and town is probably going to get much busier in the coming weeks with school being out and summer camp starting, which is also, summer fun starts June twenty-third. Let's see, the opening day for the pool is June fourteenth, so again, just, it's going to get a lot busier in town with, with folks coming in and utilizing the pool. And I just wanted to thank the rec department and Director Frohak for ensuring all the repairs to the pool were completed to allow that to open on time for their June fourteenth opening. There was a lot of work that went into that. We have our first summer concert on Friday, June twentieth. Per usual, they'll have a band, there'll be food trucks available, so we hope a lot of people will come out for our first summer concert. There will be a drive-through fundraiser and a motorcycle ride for the Carpenter family. That's taking place on June fourteenth as well. The drive-through fundraiser is from eleven-thirty to one, which will be up here in the common area. And I believe the motorcycle ride is the same day. So we have that. I just wanted to update the Mr. Kornackioli, who was in at our last meeting and presented the board with a project to replace the flagpole. His project is progressing. He's got several donors lined up as well for materials, as well as to actually do the install. So that's progressing. And then just a couple of reminders, we still have the town charter survey is open until the fourteenth, so there's still time for people to submit their responses for that. Um, and the charter committee meeting will also be holding a Q and A session this coming Thursday, the eleventh, at six thirty in the Blair Room across the way. So hopefully people can come to learn more about the charter. And we are also still seeking any interested candidates for the associate planning board member. So anybody that's interested in that should fill out an application or can contact the office with a letter of interest. Are there any other members that have any? Comments or?
I do. Okay, first of all, I would just like to say it was nice to see all the parents and grandparents at the concerts. At Naquadah School and at Glenwood School. And it's it's really something. And when I've been doing this for a number of years, and I can remember seeing. What are today's grandparents being parents of the kids who were in the concert, okay? So in other words, it has evolved to this now. And so, okay, so so many years have gone by, and then during this particular time. Dr. Kapucci and I, the principal at Glenwood School, have a long and storied history together, so. I just wanna wish her the best of luck on her retirement as well, thank you.
I just, in addition to Watchuset's graduation, Bay Path's graduation was May thirtieth. So I know we have an increasing number of Bay Path students, as well as all the college and um. Other program graduates that have happened throughout the spring. Um, and I also wanted to to follow in Paul's heels and wish Dr. Kapucci all the best in her retirement from Glenwood, and thank you for her years of service there. And again, the charter committee, I think, is gonna be important, um, public information session on Wednesday, so thank you, Jen, for including that. And in addition to the um, the associate planning board member, I think all of our board and committee appointments are. Coming up, so we have a a number of openings, whether they're people seeking reappointments or not, but positions that people can still put in for. I think we've tried to be clear that a reappointment isn't a definite guarantee, so. Try to consider them as appointments, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Right, I would turn it to David for town administrator update.
Last week was my first week. It was. Interesting, I made an effort to try to get around to all the departments, see the department heads, the only one I believe I didn't. Uh, I actually went over to the council on aging, but the director wasn't there, and I have yet to meet the assessor. So those are two that I'm going to be meeting with. Hopefully, you know, this week, I also wanna schedule about three weeks out from now, a. A department head meeting, so that we can all begin talking and discussing issues that are relevant to the town and getting. The main intent is basically just get people talking together about things that are happening in their. Departments and to see if there's some synergy there in terms of things that, hey, I wasn't aware of that, oh, good, thank you for letting us know. Getting closed down the road, well, what's the impact on the school gonna be, what's the impact on us? You know, traffic going to be, is going to require. You know, a workaround for the ambulances, things like that, those are the kind of things that come out during it. And generally, in the in the initial one, the couple meetings, it's more just an open forum, but as. We get closer to the budget, I would start talking to them about what it is our expectations are going to be. And to start the process, at least get it going in terms of discussing what is gonna be happening. Potentially, uh, next year when the annual town meeting comes around. I met with the DPW superintendent about putting out some bids, I guess, that haven't gone out to date. Of which is paving, chemicals, and catch basins. I started to do a review of thirty B relative to the procurement, and I'm gonna hopefully be getting some of that work done this week. So that we can at least get the the more important bids out so that, you know, that. You know, are the most important in terms of priority. I spoke to Representative Ferguson, I actually had two voicemail calls, and then today I spoke to her about the council on aging. And there's an earmark out there that, I guess, from what I understand, I haven't found it, that there's some paperwork out there, and I'm trying to get a call of that. And she said that Lizzie was gonna be working on it, and she believed that it was through the Department of Energy that. Because every earmark gets sent to a different agency, sort of relevant to whatever the earmark is in terms of its content. So this, in this case, they gave it to the Department of Energy. And I'm gonna be working with them. If the because, if the construction and the process, it was for ADA improvements at the council on aging. If the if the initial paperwork had been piled, but none of the work had either been done in terms of bidding it out, nor in the actual construction of. The earmark. They're gonna have to, the work has to be done by June thirtieth. So at this point, what she's suggesting is that if it hasn't been properly handed out to this point, that we're going to. Put a hold on it and carry it over to the following year. And. That's gonna be the plan for that, so I'll I'll figure that out, and if it's a matter of, once again, you know, going through the process of, you know, getting. Bid proposals out to do ADA renovations, and I'll take care of that in the next few weeks, so.
Is it, since it's an earmark, is that guaranteed in the current budget?
It's guaranteed, well, that's the thing is.
I know it's an earmark, so.
They usually give you the earmark. In the summer, and then you have the full year to get it done. And some of that might involve higher engineering services, some of it may be as simple as, you know, putting a bid out for supplies or services. But they do expect that it's the work, all the work be completed, and it's reimbursable, that's the other part about it. You don't get any of the money, what they do is you go to, you fill out the state form for, I don't know why this is going off. You go through the 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 state contract, you sign off, they give you an agency thing relative to whatever your project is. And then you take the next step, as you get work done, you submit invoices for payment, they pay you, then you pay them back. So that's sort of how that works. Future agenda, I get a letter from the DPW regarding a policy on municipal parking lots. I could put that on for a future agenda, if that's something the board would consider doing. I have an appointment that I'm going to be making for the interim town planner. The two board members, as well as the former planner, met and interviewed two candidates, and. One rose to the top, and her name is Delia Ferguson, and she's certified ADICP. She has a background in, you know, you know, consultancy and staff planner and different positions. And the individuals that interviewed her, you know, thought she rose to the top. So as a result, I'm gonna make that appointment tomorrow contingent upon a background check and. And, you know. Number one, I guess, is a concern too, that she will still be available, so I'm hoping to have that off. I have a Zoom tomorrow on, from Central Mass, assistant coordinator. They have, I guess, a process they've been looking at for curbside pickup, which is no cost to the town. Currently involves Hubbardston, Rutland, and Princeton. There was a technical grant given up by Mass D E P to explore it, so I guess they wanna restart those talks, and it's gonna be a Zoom meeting, I will be participating in that tomorrow. CMRPC. They submitted an application, they didn't submit, we submitted an application, we get an MOU, memorandum of understanding. For a green communities application to. Apply for, help applying for grants through the Green Communities Program. So we actually have a signed agreement that we now will have to execute, we already execute, but we have to fulfill the obligations of the MOU. And that's basically what I have.
Bad for your first.
Try to do what I can do, I'm still learning people's names, so, you know.
Anybody have questions for David?
Have you thought about, or is that another time for a discussion of what we're looking at for the town administrator?
That's on the on the agenda, I have a whole, I have a whole thing of comments about that too, so.
No more questions, we can move into new business, first up, we have the Moses Howe Award Ceremony. In coordination with the events committee, it sounds like we would like to have the Moses Howe Ceremony prior to our first summer concert on June twentieth. I don't know if since we had this, do we have confirmation from Mrs. Lowe that she's?
Yes, and her family.
Okay, perfect. So we can do that, you've got the plaque ordered.
Came in today.
Excellent, and then we'll have the ceremony briefly before the concert, which again starts at six P M. Is that agreeable to the board? Any concerns? Do we, do you need a motion for that, or?
No, not at all, it was more just for your information and to make sure that everybody could make it.
Okay, excellent, alright. Alright, so that was a a quick one, moving into, we have a street sign request. This is in our packets, so the request was to install a blinking yellow light at the intersection of Route sixty-eight and River Road. However, due to financial constraints, Director Koloski is recommending that we install a flashing sign. And that he actually has two of these left over following the Campbell Street Glenwood Road intersection redesign. So there would be no cost, we already have one of those in. And chief, both chiefs are in agreement with Director Koloski's recommendation as well.
I think that's fine, I think just based on the history at Watchuset Street and sixty-eight, even the overhead blinking lights sometimes cause more confusion, so the. Blinking stop signs seem to draw attention to the fact that it's a stop versus the overhead blinking, some people. Depending on the design of the roadway, seem to think that it's a yellow light, meaning that the other traffic is going to stop or or not stop or whatever, and so. I like the idea of the blinking stop sign, and if we have one.
Available.
Excuse me, essentially, the the same thing has arisen with Four Corners, okay? There have been people down there who have, there's been accidents involved because of the light confusion, so, you know, it's one of these things where the the flashing stop signs seem to make a difference, yes.
Have we had accidents on that road, on River Road? At the junction there, have we had any accidents?
I don't, I I can't speak to that specifically, but obviously being sixty-eight, I think that's a pretty. High-speed area.
And that coming through there, if I may, that intersection, I don't know, I know that there's been a number of accidents up there, I'm not one hundred percent sure it's because of that intersection, but. River Road comes off kind of on that corner coming down where um, the Vasukkan used to be the the um. Kind of opposite interval, and so it's a hard line of sight also, and sixty-eight is, I think it's, I'm not sure if it's fifty or fifty three there, or drops to forty-five. But it's, people are definitely moving through there. And so I think just to call attention to that, again, I'm not one hundred percent sure that there's been a issue with people running stop signs there or not stopping, but just.
Extra caution.
caution, extra caution.
Is this, is this sign solar or electric?
I believe they're solar, the ones around have the solar panels on them.
I believe, yeah.
Alright, okay.
Um, so if everybody's amenable?
I would move to approve the installation of a flashing stop sign at the intersection of sixty-eight East County Road and River Road by repurposing existing signage owned by the town. As recommended by DPW and our chiefs.
Second.
Any other discussion? Alright, go call Alex.
Alright, second eye.
What am I?
My turn.
Ledger eye, alright, thank you. Alright, we are going to put our Board of Public Works hats on to review a water abatement request. That came in. Let's see, for unusually high usage, I believe this was another, they did have a letter sent informing of the high usage. DPW or Water Department went out, found two leaks, leaks in two of the toilets, discovered the water meter had been tampered with, which was. Believe to have been done by the prior owners, and a new meter water was, water meter was installed. And let's see, what else do we have here, we have the letter. There's the. With the information regarding the two leaking toilets, that it was Director Koloski's recommendation that the abatement for. To cross some way be denied. Any questions or comments on the item? If not, I will. Entertain our motion.
So moved.
What's your motion?
Excuse me.
Any discussion to approve or deny?
Yeah, we are. I'm sorry?
We need a motion, is there any discussion first on agreement or discussion on the the abatement request or Director Koloski's recommendation to deny?
That's what I'm, yeah, agreeing with with Mr. Koloski's recommendation, yeah.
Just give the board a minute to review.
Yeah, um. Does it say that in his comments that the meter is not working?
It had been tampered with.
But it says first, the meter is not working, right? That's what I'm reading.
On which?
Uh, it's the last page, it's his, his. I don't know what this is, uh.
It's like, it's the work order for the the Water Department employee falls out when they go to the house.
Work order, sure.
Um, the meter's not working, dial and temperature and temper.
Temper wire.
Yep, temper wire have been tampered with. So I think when they call in. It says that it wasn't working, do you have any idea, did he say what the impact on? Their usage would have been with that, or just?
He didn't indicate specifics on that, no.
But everything up until then has been. Expected usage, it looks like.
It's my understanding that the prior bill, there was some overlap between the prior owners and these owners, and at that time, they didn't know that the water meter had been tampered with. And it wasn't until they got that letter and the Water Department came out that they found that it had been tampered with, um, likely by the prior owners. Um, and then at that point, they replaced the water meter.
Is this a new resident, I mean, are they?
Yeah, it's so.
Are they here?
Right here.
Name and an address, please.
John Costello, Six Carlton's Way. All of that is accurate, the guy came out, he changed the meter, he put the radio on, the thing, you can read it from the street. We didn't touch that wire, I said to him.
We didn't move into the.
Well, this is after that, I think, I said, could I, I dropped a box over there, because my cellar's a disaster, we had so much crap, excuse me. We didn't touch it, he said that was deliberately cut, and it looked like to him, and you could ask him, I think his name was Mike, we're new here. Someone tried to pry that water top, the the meter off. Now, there's, we have a pool there, maybe somebody was trying to get a a pool fill or something, I don't know what they were doing. But the cover was on there until maybe a week or two ago. We we did not do this.
Oh, no, and and I don't think, I don't, I wanna speak for the board, I don't think anybody's insinuating that you are, I just wanna make sure that we have that.
No, I I don't expect to to get anything for free, you know, I I I don't, I expect to pay, but that's a little steep.
I, me personally, not, and I hadn't reached out to Chris, but knowing that it was tampered with, I I would. Like to hear his information on whether or not that could have impacted any of the readings.
Yeah, I I mean, you know, it says two out of the four toilets are leaking, you know, I'm not a plumber, obviously, but it's my experience and just kind of common sense that two. You know, running toilets is not gonna have that. you know, running toilets is not gonna have that sort of impact on a bill or on a usage like that. So the fact that it says meter is not working, that concerns me when we're dealing with things like this. You know, I know we just had a similar type thing a week ago or two weeks ago. But that one specifically stated that the meter was working fine, there was no issues, there was nothing found. So I mean, this to me is a different story. So I, I mean, I think it's worth asking Chris and, and just for clarification to the whole board that what two toilets leaking would cost for, like, what the estimated overage for something like that would be? Because that might be useful dollars for people just to understand what that would impact.
I, I think that's a fair question that we can ask Director Koloski along with like I said, the tampered meter, how that would impact any readings.
We had, I don't mean, I don't want to speak out of turn here. We had the two, the gaskets, I guess, on the back of the toilet, toilets, two of them. We had them repaired. So the meter readings that they're getting, say now, I don't know how often they do it. It should be pretty accurate. I mean, like I said.
Hopefully lower.
I may look like a porpoise, but I don't swim like one. You know what I mean? One of those deals.
Through the chair.
Thank you, thank you for listening.
Question for you.
Sure.
You say you're new to town?
Yes.
You moved in when?
Um, Jan.
End of January.
The end of January.
How long had the house been empty before you moved in?
That the prior resident was sleeping there. We were coming through to do our walkthrough, and I saw a head in the window, okay? She had an air mattress, she had nowhere to go. And she was there until then, till we walked through that last time and closed on the house.
Okay. I was just trying to think if there were months between you getting there and that.
No, no, no.
Okay.
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 Maybe a month, because we didn't officially live there until maybe the end of January.
We moved a lot of our stuff ourselves.
We moved our stuff ourself, stored in the garage, but us living there was probably the end of January.
Yeah. The stuff that was in the basement, I'm just trying to get clarity here. Was that from the old owner or is that your stuff?
The stuff that's there now, that's our stuff.
But was the basement crowded and that kind of stuff before? No?
I, I said to the Water Department, I said, maybe I could hit that with a box or a hockey stick. I get so much crap down there, like I said.
He said it looked like it was cut.
That's, that's exactly what he said.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Leah, do you have any other questions? Alright, so to me, guys, it sounds like we have a couple follow-up things for Director Koloski and we'll hold it till our next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, we have a one-day liquor license for Seven Saws for the June twentieth concert on the Common. Sounds like we've gotten all the approvals that are needed. They've paid the out-of-town vendor fee. Uh, so I think we just have just approved.
Yes, just as a little bit of background, the vendor that was originally scheduled for that particular concert unfortunately couldn't make it. So at the last minute, the Events Committee had asked Seven Saws if they could do it. Because as you may recall, back in April, you guys had approved their concert for all the summer concerts. And that's the only reason this one was kind of out of the list, was it was unexpected.
Okay. Um, so if there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Seven Saws Brewing for June twentieth from five to nine P M on the Town Common.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Alright, we'll call Alex.
Alright.
Second and I.
One minute.
Matt tonight.
Ledger I. Alright, uh, next up, we have the Veterans Parking Spot. This was a request by Harry to revisit this topic. Harry, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, I want to thank the board for scheduling that. As you know, veterans are the backbone of this society in keeping this country safe. And yet, we have done nothing except put up a Purple Heart sign on the town road for that. So this is what I was hoping, and I understand the discussion the last time regarding recreation. And how important they felt having one less parking space that they can do. But I also think that if we have July fourth, we have this, you're gonna find a veteran that's gonna park there. Veteran is part of the recreation, he can park there. I, I, I find it disingenuous to treat recreation with such high honors and yet not do something for the veterans by at least granting them a parking space. And that is why I wanted to revisit it. And I think we have room for one in the town parking lot.
If I may, I don't, I didn't go back and watch the meeting, but I thought the final decision was partially because of recreation parking spots, but also because there were questions about enforcement and how to enforce and who would be enforcing and everything. And Chief Monaco had said in his research that it's enforced, the only authorized parker, people who could park there were ones that had the veterans vanity plates. And that it was, I believe, and I'm not minimizing it. It was a relatively small number of individuals in the community that hold that, the vanity plate. Again, I'm not, but I think to me, that was the larger piece was the enforcement part and not necessarily the, the spot of, I know for some members of the board at the time, it was definitely a recreation piece, but the enforcement. And I guess my question still, in kind of knowing what the budget is looking like for the upcoming fiscal year, is how that enforcement could be and would be in the, the person power to enforce.
Well, I wasn't looking at it from a, I know M G L allows it. But if you go to Lowe's, for example, it doesn't say disabled veterans only or plate only. It says veterans parking only. And that's what I was looking for from the town, veterans parking. So if a car has a sticker on it from the Air Force or whatever, you can pretty much be assured that he's a veteran serving in the military, has served. So that's right, just to, to do some notice for veterans in this town. We got plenty of veterans who donate their time through the American Legion. And I just want to see some honor. It's up to the board, but again, I think the board should take a hard look and at least allow one, one out of the many parking spaces we have for a veteran in town. And it doesn't cost hardly anything to put up a pole and a sign that says veterans parking only. And certainly, the town administrator could probably figure out what's the best place to put one.
If, I just want to, I have, I looked up the M G L here and it does state in M G L that it's for owned and operated by a veteran that displays a veteran registration plate. So that is a requirement and that says the parking space shall only be used by a veteran that meets the requirements of this subsection. And they even have the, the sign, they even have the words on it, which says veteran parking only. The space is reserved for those who have served. Unauthorized vehicles may be removed at the vehicle owner's expense. So there's nothing specific in the wording there that states it's a veteran registration plate only, that's just part of the M G L designation. So I, I think, I, to echo Leah's sentiments, I, I, I agree with the sentiment. I like the thought of having it. M G L states it's for a town hall parking lot and just given the small amount of space that we have within that, I think having it at town hall is tough if there is a way or if the board was amenable to having something in, in a different parking lot, where there may be here at the library, where there's more often less traffic, less, less of an issue with parking, where we wouldn't necessarily have to reserve a spot where, you know, we've got all the town employees that park in that lot, everybody that, especially with the pool that's gonna start coming to park there for summer camps, all, all of those things. If there were an alternate potential location that could be discussed.
And I think also, if I may, I think also oftentimes the spot, like, because I believe, I want to say Holden has a Purple Heart spot in their, for their senior center parking lot, that is painted purple for recipients of the Purple Heart. And I'm not sure if it's veterans only or not. I'm not sure on that, Harry.
Purple Heart is.
Well, I know, but I'm not sure if their parking spot is all veterans or Purple Heart.
No, that would be just for Purple Hearts.
Okay.
You mean it's senior center.
Yeah, at the, and so generally, it's a spot that's closer to the building egresses. And I think oftentimes those, those spots are for, generally where people park, if they're just running in and out to drop off payment or, or something. And so I don't, again, I don't, I'm not so concerned about taking a spot in the scheme of spots, but just the business of if somebody's gonna park there all day versus a spot where they could be running, be utilized by a lot more people that would also need it and be able to run in and out of a building or something.
Is, is there something that we could do to make a spot that doesn't coincide with M G L? I mean, like, to your point, having something that's requiring a plate creates a enforcement issue and creates complication. But can we do something in honor, like, less legal?
I think that was part of the discussion that we had previously was to see if there were other alternate ways that we could find, rather than just doing the designated spot at the town hall. And I don't know that that ever came back around to discuss any of the additional ideas.
I think it's still, if I, if I recall, and again, I didn't go back and watch that part of the meeting, but I thought some of it was still enforcement-wise, like, what's to say? And I think some of it came up at like the, the big Y spots that are like parking with small children or whatever. Like, there, what is the enforcement options for that if there is somebody that's parked there for extended periods of time or something? And I think that that's when it came back, that the only avenue for true enforcement is through M G L, right? And so.
It's just a sense of respect and, yeah, I mean, we could police it ourselves and just say, you know, if somebody's there, we, we can't tow it, but, you know, shame.
Yeah, if they park there, shame on them. I mean, we're talking about, you know, people go off to college for four years. These guys go off to war for four years. And I think they deserve a little something in this town. And to say that, well, you know what, July fourth, everybody parks there, so we can't give them one? Or the swimming pool is busy, we can't give them one? Or let's stick them over at the library, we can't give them one at the town hall? I think is doing an injustice to our veterans who really serve, uh, who have served this community. And it's not just the license plates. There are many, many veterans. If you look around town, you talk to the American Legion, there's a lot more than just that. So that's what I was thinking of. Alex was, how do we show our appreciation by? You come into town, you don't have to, I mean, you, you can park anywhere, but this says, hey, you're a veteran, you can park here. Go in, do your business, come out and leave. We got something for you to show you our respect.
Could we put a sign that says like veteran preferred parking?
I think the town could do anything. I mean, M G L allows us to do that with a vanity, with a plate. But I think the town, actually, unless we check, can do anything they want as far as that's concerned. We can check with D P W.
So I was just gonna add for a bit of information, this past week, the D P W just recently installed signs in the parking lot in areas to specifically say for municipal, parking for municipal offices only from eight A M to four thirty P M. Because it has become such a challenge with employees losing their parking spots if they leave during the day. So just for the board's knowledge, that those signs have now been posted as well, which may further restrict being able to put that spot close to the building. Just, just so.
Where were those signs put up?
Um, they're put up, so they're put up, they've actually been put up around the whole area of the parking lot. There's one right in front of the annex, but then there's other ones along the electrical poles on the other side of the parking lot. They're really trying to designate that whole right-hand side just for employees, because at any given time, there's about fifteen employees parked there during the day. And there's also three state vehicles that are parked there twenty-four seven as well.
The one right behind the annex, not behind the town hall?
Correct. The one, yeah, like if you were coming down, basically everything on the right-hand side is now has signs for municipal parking only.
So people who are going to the pool won't be able to park there?
So their intention or their hope is that the people for the pool are going to use the new lot that they created on the other side of Memorial Drive, where they did the walkway to the pool. And Chris said they're gonna be putting in a crosswalk over there, so they're hoping to attract more people to park on that side. With that being said, they could still technically park on that lower section that's kind of behind the town hall piece.
So I think we have room for one.
I agree.
So I'd like to make a motion that the town support installing a veterans parking spot, preferred parking for veterans, whatever, in the town hall parking lot.
Second.
To be designated by the town administrator.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? I think my only other question is, is since this is M G L, are we essentially adopting this M G L? And does that have to go to town meeting?
Uh, I don't believe it's an acceptance action. I think it's a simple matter of voting to, um, to endorse the idea under the principle of the master of law.
I was gonna, if I may, I think the motion says veterans preferred or something, so it's kind of.
Not adopting M G L?
It's correct. I don't think it's adopting, because it would not be for vanity plate specific. It would be like, be a good human and don't lie.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, like.
I, I think that's reasonable.
And if I find a military guy lying, you tell me about him.
If, if you put it in with the statutory reference, you're gonna be required to fill the requirements of
Right.
law, in, in which case you will have to, you know, enforce it and make sure that if somebody's parking there without a plate, then they're gonna actually have to get towed, which is a whole.
And so we'd rather not have that happen. I mean, yeah, it leaves a little bit of annoyance if somebody parks there, but you know what, I, I think it's.
They're on their.
I've seen people park in handicap spots that are.
Those you should.
The one outside the town hall, I can't tell you how many cars I seen there that do not have placards or plates or anything.
There's a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second. I, I think my last comment on it is, again, not necessarily opposed to it, but as far as how we designate it, with what type of signage, I would be interested to hear from Chris what that, what his recommendation would be and what the cost associated with that would be.
Could I also ask if maybe reach out to the Veterans Agent? Because I believe she's worked in other communities also, so she may have some, she was instrumental in bringing the Purple Heart community to town. And so getting that signage and also, so she might have some ideas on, on the language and signage for that as well.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just, just to clarify, the motion is to, to move forward with it, but as far as which spot signage, none of that has been.
Correct. Correct. Just authorize it.
Yeah, I believe Harry said to the town administrator's decision.
Right.
Alright, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Alright, we'll call Alex.
Alright.
Second and I.
One minute.
Matt tonight.
Ledger I.
Thank you, board.
Um, we have the donation and license agreement for the Community Grief Garden for Hope Lives Here. This is one where we did have a grant agreement that was initially brought before the board and approved. But after review by town council, it was not the correct type of document. So we now have a donation and license agreement that needs to be voted and signed by the board. And if I have it correct, nothing in the document as far as conditions or anything has changed from what was originally agreed upon. It's just putting it in the right document that needs to be signed.
Personally, this fulfills pretty much everything that I want to see in a document like this where we're giving land away, if you will. And the performance of what has to be done, who's responsible for it. All falls to Hope Lives Here. And the third part of it is the issue of they don't perform their duties, there is a sixty-day notice of termination. Issue if they don't perform their duties, there is a sixty day notice of termination of the agreement. So that kind of fulfills everything I look for.
And I I do wanna clarify, it's we're not donating the land, it's just allowing them use of the property for this purpose.
So we still own it? Okay, cause it says don- donation here, that's why.
It's donation and license agreement, it's a formal like legal depending on.
There's no exchange of property or anything like that, transfer of property.
I think it'll kind of be nice if it's done right, you know, I think it'll be a great place for some people.
Any other discussion? Well, entertain a motion to approve and sign the donation and license agreement between the town of Rutland and Hope Lives Here for a community grief garden on town property.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Alright, roll call Alex.
Alright.
Second eye.
One and eye.
That's an eye.
Ledger eye. Alright, um so we're gonna move into the town administrative search process. Um this is uh essentially a discussion for the board to decide which. Which way do we wanna go about the search, do we wanna have uh more of an internal screening committee, do we want to look at hiring a consultant? Or a firm to assist with the process. Um so I will let David um speak to some of the options that the board can discuss for next steps.
Uh as Jen had mentioned, uh there are two options, one is an internal option which would. Uh allow us to uh put it up to uh not to bid per se, but to. Advertise it and conduct the interviews uh internally. Uh I would recommend that um. Uh the interviews be conducted at least initially by a review committee versus the board of selection because uh. In a review committee, if there's more than one uh interview, they can actually hold the interview in. Uh private session because uh it's felt that the candidates uh particularly if they're in another community. And they don't want their current employer to know specifically that they're uh interviewing for another job. Uh it gives them some protection until uh they get into that final round, which is generally three. To five candidates who will then come in and it'll be an open session, you conduct an interview in open session. It also takes some of the politics out of it, uh where uh the review committee will. Uh sit and review the actual applications and decide based on some kind of criteria that uh. Uh what we want uh from a candidate in terms of educational qualifications, prior work experience. Uh things along that line and you know, just looking at their resume in terms of where they've been, how long they were there and things like that. Uh there isn't another advantage in that if it's internal, we can start immediately. You can put that advertisement in the MMA and in you know, certain publications. To start collecting uh names of applicants uh who might be qualified and might be interested. Uh the second step um would be to look at it from uh the perspective of hiring an outside consultant. Um once again, uh they they generally have a review committee, the review committee once again goes through the process of selecting. Uh with the assistance of the consultant, uh several candidates that they wanna interview and they screen it down. Consultant provides all the questions to make sure they're legally correct and uh basically sets all the interviews up. And the the advantage to having a consultant is that they're connected into the town administrator network. They know who is working where, they're familiar with every single town administrator in the state, they know, you know. In uh candidates that potentially might wanna leave their job for one reason or another. And they have a pool that they can draw upon. And it it would take longer to do it that way, only from the perspective of. Uh you that is the first step you'd have to do is put out a an RFP of some sort to hire the consultant. And you're gonna take a good six weeks right there, six to eight weeks, it's gonna take a couple months. Because you're gonna, we're gonna put it out, they're gonna respond with proposal, we gotta evaluate the proposals and then we and then we gotta. Uh make a selection on a vendor, then it takes them. Probably another two to three weeks to develop a town profile, look at all the financial data. Uh incorporate anything the board want or might have included in um. Uh the job description, um it's important, I think, once again about the money um that. Uh you know, if you if you price it too low, you you're gonna run into a very thin pool. Um that you may not get the qua- uh candidates that you really want, you might get somebody who's being, you know. Um you know, leaving their community for some other reason other than. Uh you know, just being a great town administrator and there's some downsides to that, I don't think you get the the quality. Uh on an internal selection than you do versus a uh um a selection by a consultant. And once again, I have, you know, a disclosure there that I've worked with a number of the companies and.
Do question. Do you feel that applicants feel safer? Going through an organization versus internal because their information that they're looking won't be subject to getting out?
Even with the consultant, it doesn't matter whether it's internal or with the consultant. As long as the board appoints a uh town administrator review committee. Uh the initial applications can all be held in executive session. So their their information, who they are is all. Uh confidential and it it's not gonna be shared with the public, it only becomes open when they come here for the final interview. The consultant will forward three to five names, uh those intervi- interviews and even then, I've seen it happen where. And by the time we actually get to the point of where we're gonna interview them, a couple of them already pulled out. They said, oh geez, you know, it was just something.
Or they found a job somewhere else.
Well, yeah, or test and just testing the waters to see what the marketability of of the position is.
The reason I ask is there's a few towns in area looking for administrators, so.
Yeah, it's it's.
We're we're.
It's an amazing time because the salary scale in the last five years has gone up dramatically. It used to be and and the thing is is that you're not, even with the increase in the salary, you're not getting the quality candidates that you would get. Um you know, you know, ten years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, like you'd you'd get thirty candidates ten years ago and some of them are just throwaways and you know, they work at CVS and they think they could be a town administrator. But others, um you know, definitely have the qualifications qualifications as well as a skill set to do the job. It's gonna be a combination of experience, you want somebody that's gonna have, you know, had five years of experience. That has worked in the environment, um and they're they're you know, with the salary, they're gonna stay. You don't want this position to turn into a position where every year you're going through this whole process again. To hire a new person to come in and work a year and then go off and make, you know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars more. It's gotta be attractive enough to get somebody that wants to stay for a period of time. And it's not an easy nut, I mean, it's a tough nut to crack. Cause I've gone through it twice and in both cases, it's been. Let's put it this way, my my contract period was shorter than it took to actually find somebody. And I was in the community one place for seven months, another place for nine months and then in the nine months, they still needed three more months. And they brought another uh interim town administrator and and that finally they found the right candidate.
May I ask a question, I guess, I had been pushing before to kind of do some conflict resolution within the the community. Because I think while salary is a huge piece for why we've had a lot of turnover in town administrator, there is a lot of other. Um considerations as well.
Oh sure.
Um and so how can we. Work on that piece, I mean, obviously the monetary piece in small communities such and not so small communities is is a challenge regardless. But the other pieces, like we could throw, if we had the money, we could throw money, but if there are other issues. Significant issues that make a work a very challenging work environment, um that's. You can.
There is a network out there and I think if it's a community that is churning through town administrators. Other town administrators know that. So like you're you're not gonna fool anybody if it's, there are other considerations that they're getting out because, oh geez. You know, you got one for uh uh they took this job, one for the pot to the frying pan, you know, it's. It you know, they're aware of that, people talk, you know, it's like I said, that network is out there that.
And I guess. How but how as a community can we be proactive in working through some of those. Considerations or being open and honest with any applicants or search. Whether it's an over an internal review committee or an external hiring committee. What what are the other considerations?
If I may.
Yep.
I I know we had talked at one of our last meetings about everybody kind of conducting their own individual exit interviews with Austin. That was gonna be one of my future agenda items is seeing if everybody had that opportunity and has that feedback and then we were gonna kind of meet and. Discuss all of that to see what we could, um as part of this process, what do we as a board want to change? And discuss some of those um pieces of, you know, the expectations and responsibilities that this board would have for. A permanent town administrator, what changes do we have to make? I think we can still have those discussions um. In tandem, but I think for for tonight, just having the direction of how do we feel about the the process, are we gonna? Does the board want's internal, the do we have the, would we rather the consulting firm? Um have that as the first step and then again, in upcoming meetings, have those discussions on. The internal pieces of it.
Question. I'm trying to grasp with. We'll reach, if we do internal, we'll reach seventy, eighty percent of those people interested versus going external. We'll get more, would we get more qualified?
I I think if you go to a consultant, you get more qualified. Cause they know people, once again, not only in state, but they also work with, you know, a lot of the national. Uh public of um in government, I'm trying to think of the name of the organization at this point, but. Yeah, they have they have tons of resources that we don't have. And.
And they would come from all.
Well, the other thing too is if they put it out and in in something is not. Letting it flow to to bring it to resolution, they can start calling people, they can say, alright, hey, I know Bob Smith, he's. You know, looking for a job, let me call and talk to him and say, this is the situation, they will do a one-on-one call with him or her. And the the intention being to get qualified candidates candidates in the door.
And if I may, just because I've been through this a few times with the internal, um I know. And I I've been on both sides of it and I see pros and cons to kind of both sides of it, but for the hiring consultant, I understand also is sometimes they're. They're often very connected with universities also that are, um so they may know people who have a sufficient background, but are that are coming through an MPA. Or an M um a a degree program that they have the experience, but that now they're getting the degree also and so they can help. Through that way also where if we put out a internal call, those applicants may apply, but they may not. Because they may think like, oh, well, they're not gonna consider me because they don't have my degree yet, but. Or or whatever, I don't know.
Generally, uh most towns require a bachelor's degree, a lot of um towns. Recommend that you have an MPA or an MBA, that's generally, but you know, it all depends on how the position is defined.
I I think.
And if it if I'm sorry, and if it's if it's a person who doesn't have the degree yet and is not in the field. Then you you got you are gonna be an on-the-job kind of thing, they're gonna not know how government really works versus the. The 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 uh you know, the study of it and the practicality of it are two different things.
So we can get it done faster if we do internal.
Yeah.
Or we can get it done better if we go outside.
And the then the cost is gonna be somewhere between, I would guess, I didn't talk to anybody because I didn't wanna. Muddy the waters and say, oh, well, you called, you know, people you knew. Uh but I my best guess would be it's gonna be between twelve and twenty-two thousand dollars, depending upon. Uh you know, the consultant you may uh consider. One advantage of the Collins Center, they're a state organization, so they don't have to go out to bid. So if you said, oh geez, let's just get the Collins Center and you can, you know, it's an intergovernmental agency.
Right, wouldn't cost us really.
And I I'm not saying it won't cost as much, but it won't it won't. Time wise.
Yeah.
Time wise, they would, they'd still need that initial four to five weeks to get the uh RFP together in terms of collecting all the data. Uh putting uh together a a an overview of the municipality, which is basically, you know, marketing tools. Say, hey, this is what we're offering, this is our issues, they'll say, well, geez, the town has experienced a financial difficulty. If that's the case, just to let people know, this is what you're getting into when you.
Yeah.
You apply for this job, you know, they they lay it out there pretty well in terms of, they basically identify some of the problems that are in the community and. What you're gonna be expected to uh accomplish once you're there.
So the price comes down to how how good we can negotiate.
They're gonna they're gonna give you a proposal for X amount of dollars, that you know, I don't know, I've never been in a negotiation.
Okay, alright.
You're gonna say, and the thing is, is that, you know, all depends on what the criteria is for selecting that consultant, if it's an RFP.
Yeah.
Is it gonna be strictly on the basis of money? And you say, oh geez, he has the lowest bid at thirteen thousand, we should take him, you know, that that's not a good way to get a consultant. I think you you need criteria outlined to say, how many years have you ever been in business? You know, how many application, how many um recruitment processes do you conduct every year? And to to get a sense on what you're buying from the recruiting, you don't want somebody, once again, first. You know, job ever, you know, consulting to. To be a recruiter, you know.
So this would be in our initial phase of looking for somebody, of interviewing the groups. Okay.
Is is that where we would actually interview the firms or is that?
You need to interview the firms.
That that would be.
I actually started pulling them down, some RFPs, if the, you know, I could forward them out or whatever, just to get a sense, I'm not gonna rewrite. Or reinvent the wheel, you know, there are tons of, you know, proposals out there that, you know, I'm sure everybody's. Reused them in certain different forms, but it generally, you know, they need two or three weeks to put the proposal together. And then once they put the proposal together, they probably need five to six weeks to get the packet together. And then you're talking a couple of weeks for the um screening, first screening round. You know, do we have a candidate, okay, oh, geez, we only have one person or two people that are qualified, but we want three. So now you you'd say, alright, we're gonna take those two, we're gonna put it out again, or have the consultant say, do you have anybody in mind that might be interested in this job?
Leah, what did you find successful?
I think, I mean, I think that the honestly, I think there's pros and cons to both, um doing it both ways, um the. One of my big pushes for having a um external intern was if the board, and I had no idea how the board was going to go. Um what went an internal search committee, um having someone that could speak more candidly about. Potential pros or cons of candidates, just because they're not going to have to have a an employment, a long-term employment relationship with the.
Yeah.
The ultimate person or candidates.
Yeah.
Um I think, you know, the the consultant firms, I think, have a lot of pros, um. We in the past, we've gone with the same firm for for select or for uh town administrator, we've used the same firm twice. Um but I think kind of casting a wider net and seeing, um they all, my understanding is they all kind of have different pockets of people also. I it's all o- oftentimes the same general pool of people, but different pockets also. Um I know in the past, a couple of them didn't wanna work with the town, just either they couldn't take on another town in search at that time or or whatever. Um so that's another consideration that just because there's, I know three big ones, Collins and two others off the top of my head. Um as far as search firms that are well 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 known. Um but I don't know what their availability is to take on another community in our in our timeframe, um we had done when we used this search firm before. We had asked them to bring forth their top, like essentially do all the review committee work and bring forth their top um three to five candidates. So both times, I believe it was three candidates that they brought forward. Um for our, when we did the internal search, we had a pool, a a large. For our, when we did the internal search, we had a pool, a a large pool of applicants, but um to. Kind of David's point, some of them were clearly throwaways, um and some of them, um it. I think there's a lot more research that needs to be done by the review. An an internal review committee to really piece out some of the candidates and why they're they're in in search.
In 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 the review committee, you know, you wanna get people from certain skill sets. Like finance committee, you have the finance director, you know, uh public safety, have somebody and they have some residents in the banker. A lawyer, you know, those are the type of people you wanna get on the internal committee.
Having served on various search committees over the years in town, I can concur with just. Exactly with what you just said, okay, so in other words, you know, yeah, you're looking at candidates and you get candidates that come in. That are. They fit the bill, just what you want, but you know, then when you get to interviewing them and finding out, you know. Okay, he's a creative writer or something along those lines too, so you know, you have to be aware of that sort of thing as well.
Yeah, some people don't interview well, you know, they have no standing resume and they just get in there and they freeze and. You know, the review committee and the selection of the different candidates to whittle it down, you know, so if they get fifteen, they say, oh, we're gonna do seven. And that and they're gonna recommend three to the board, you know, and you see enough standing applications, say. Alright, this person has got a really good shot at this. If you're not in the field like a consulting company, the last time we used, I used in a consulting company. They were sort of giving us some background on each of the candidates, they knew where they had been and what had happened is their backgrounds. You know, the 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 things you wouldn't know if you were just poking, you know, around trying to find a candidate, you know, randomly.
And if I, I think that that's to me, one of the bigger um pluses for going with a consulting firm. Uh is that that piece and especially in the current um. Market in municipal government as a whole, that we know that municipal employees are a dwindling bunch, um and so.
It's been huge turnover in the last five years.
And then I know um that even M M A is really making a push for uh like the. Quote unquote, younger pop, younger generations to kind of step up and fill municipal government roles, but it's, there's a huge gap, so. Um I think, I I think also, one of my considerations for hiring a consultant firm would. And they may not be able to tell us, but kind of what, obviously, there's a lot of uh. Reasons that town administrators don't stay, either don't fulfill a contract or only fulfill a contract for one time. But what kind of is their success rate in getting um more longer term, longer term serving town administrators versus. Um I think we, if we as a community, and I've said this many times in other, for other departments, that. There's a huge cost to be in a stepping stone community, so what we may be saving in the. Year budget is costing us hand over fist down the line.
Every two years, paying somebody twenty thousand dollars to hire a new person.
Well, and whether it's on the search side, whether it's just the onboarding or offboarding costs, whether it's the. Discontinuity in work and um projects and everything, I think that especially in a town, like any department head position. But especially like a town administrator position, there's a huge um. Loss of that that side of knowledge.
Historical knowledge is very important. And the the longer a person stays, the more valuable they become because they have the inside scoop on what happened. Behind certain events that, you know, a new administrator will come in and say, oh, I gotta spend three hours, you know, going through files and. They may not even get the complete picture.
And I think even working with um like in smaller communities where we have so much regionalization and everything, just those relationships with other surrounding communities. But also the uh other governmental, intergovernmental agencies um is a huge piece as well. Um so I'm not, I personally am, I like I said, I see pros and cons to both, um I. Realize that the cost and the time for the consultant firm is probably a a negative, um but I'm. I don't wanna drive this by any means, so.
I guess the old phrase is you hire the best to get the best. You know, so.
Yeah, if we were doing this every twenty years or something, I would certainly be all for doing it ourselves, um because I feel like. We have a better ability to do it, but here we are, having somebody who's leaving after a year, um with somebody who left after. Less than a year before, um I think we need help with a track record, um and we kinda need help. Otherwise, I'd wanna do it ourselves, but I don't think we're there.
No, I don't either.
I I agree, I think the the other draw for me using a firm is the the impartiality. You know, as far as the candidate search and the candidates that are brought forward. You know, even if we have a review committee, it's still made up of internal staff and I, my preference would certainly be to have those external eyes. That that know what the job entails and again with the, you know, direction from the board that. As far as job description responsibilities that, I again, I understand the cost, but I think it's in the long run, I think. It will work in our favor.
I think if the board does his job right and hiring the right firm, then that will be worth the money. Seriously, you know, really interrogating these guys as to who they do and what.
Yeah, they put all the questions together, they'll, you know, they'll, they will conduct the background search if you want them to do that, generally. You just run a core through the police, but you know, it depends upon the extent that you wanna go to there.
And I will say another kind of downside for me for the internal search committee. Um is we have a really hard time having people volunteer for um any sort of committee and to try to want. If we want to try to find a diverse um and diverse and kind of targeted groups of individuals to serve, it's. It's a decent, it's a big time commitment to review all the applications and um go through screenings and everything, so. There's that that piece also where I feel if we were a community that we had people banging at the door, um.
Might be different.
It might be different, but.
Paul, do you have any?
I'm just thinking about, you know, okay, the committees I served on, three of the candidates. That we recommended were hired, two have retired and one still serves, and so, okay, these, these are the things that. You kind of say, okay, I think we did something pretty well, so I mean, you know, you're looking at people, you're beginning to. See what their strong points are and what what they really think and what they wanna do and where they wanna go, so it becomes, you know, fine. But like I said, you know, two have retired and one still serves, so. I can be pretty happy about that, I think, maybe I shouldn't be, I don't know, but anyway. It's one of these things that, okay, when you look at candidates and, you know, we were screening candidates, so probably. Pretty close to three weeks and then started interviewing and so, you know, pretty much in about four or five weeks, we had a candidate to recommend to the board. The candidates got hired and so, you know, okay, I'll buy the first round.
So is your your thought more for an internal committee or for the consulting firm, for the town administrator?
No, it was an internal thing, what we did, you know, it was all done here. And, you know, we advertised for uh. Advertised for people who wanted to fill a position, who had, you know, certain certain requirements. And when these resumes started coming in, then we just started looking at these things and. Saying, okay, 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 and whatever, and, you know, brought these people in, interviewed them and. Um yeah, so, okay, we all 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 would come to a point of agreement on. Candidate that we would recommend to the board, and so, yeah, okay, so, you know.
Are you wanting to see that type of process for this town administrator search? Or do you want, are you?
Okay, I was not involved in a town administrator situation at all, other than to stand here with a video camera and record it. But at any rate, no, um, you know, um. You know, I, to name them, okay, you know, uh fire chief, the deep. Police chief and the D P W director, okay, so, you know, these were the people that. Came to us and convinced us that, you know, these were the ones we wanted to hire and so, okay. So that's where we are right now, and like I say, two of them have retired and one of them still serves, so.
If there are internal candidates, that's, it works with the police, cause usually you have somebody that's been working inside the chief and. Same thing with the fire chief, there's always a deputy chief and there are already candidates that may be inside that, you know.
There were internal candidates that applied as well, yes, and so, you know, but in.
So I'm I'm getting the sense from the board that it sounds like the consulting firm is the preferred direction.
I I'll say yes to that. Um the question I have, this consulting firm, they won't just stay in the area, they'll go statewide, countrywide?
Yeah, we want them to explore all options. Usually, you know, they'll, it's New England, like, you know, certain consulting firms work both in New England, New Hampshire.
Gotta be able to talk Boston.
Boston.
Okay, so if that's a a preferred direction, it sounds like the next step in that process would be for the R F P.
Yes, it was.
And then that, would that start with you and?
How much money do you, how much money do you, would you wanna, you know, are we gonna, if it came in like. You know, X amount of dollars and say, well, geez, I didn't think this is gonna cost that much, but I'm giving you a price range, which I think is pretty reliable, you know.
I was gonna say, I think the first time we did it, we were thinking in the ten to fifteen thousand, the second time, I think we were thinking in the twelve to fifteen, maybe fourteen sixteen.
But I'm bumping it out to twenty two because I think that there could be a potential for that to happen, I just don't want you to come back, me to say twelve to fifteen and then come back and.
Is that, is that something that's in the R F P or is that just they'll bring that as far as part of their proposal?
You'll you'll tell them, you'll put together an R P which basically specifies what you want them to do. And and you have some criteria to rate them so that you're not stuck to the lowest price, if you, you know, you find out, geez, oh, this guy, you know, new guy. That's why you wanna have an experienced qualification, somebody that's been doing this for five to ten years. Um you know, number of recruiters they do each year, that kind of thing, to sort out that a candidate that just says. You know, I'm gonna put a placard out and become a recruiter, you know.
Are there specific degrees for people like this? Do you, I mean, you know, I won't say like a degree in recruiting, but it's like.
No, I think.
Stuff like that for these people, you know?
There there, some of them I think are just people that, you know, uh wanna work in government. You know, work with government and that's their choice, you know. I can't s- speak to the fact that they, you know, they're credentialed in terms of having an M B A or things like that, but.
I think a lot, if I may, I think a lot of them, many of them are either have are a network that have worked in um government. Or have been in town administrator, town manager positions, and so they know the ins and outs and kind of see the. Pros and cons of different communities and um a lot of them are teachers, professors at universities or still connected. Um through the net, through whether it's M M A or I M A or or whatever they are.
You find a lot of them have been involved in government, either as an administrator or executive director for a nonprofit, that kind of thing, you know, that. They know the lay of the land and that's what their, that's what their expertise is, and they know the candidate pool.
And a lot of them have some level of H R experience, just and how read people and read the boards and the communities also, so I don't wanna say H R is as far as like. Managing rentland H R, but just H R in the in the development of interpersonal relationships. If that makes sense.
And and the interview questions are all, they put they put those together, so there's no bias in them that. You know, we may say, oh geez, can you ask this and or they, everybody chips in two questions and. Half of them are things we shouldn't ask anybody, you know, never mind a candidate, you know.
Um one thing I know, I think one of the considerations for doing the uh a firm was if we were going to put, if. The select board was going to put together a review committee to work with the the firm to kind of do some of the screening or in the. The past two iterations, we just asked, the board just asked the firm to essentially do all the review and everything and bring the top three to five.
It's it's cleaner that way.
It's cleaner and it like, it takes out that level of. Kind of in between, I guess.
It'll be faster too.
I was gonna say, and my sense was that it was faster, but I just wanted to, I don't know if there's a, if that. Is more or less cost because they're.
Uh they, it's a billable hour, so they're gonna look in and say, geez, and then what they do is they assign, you know, timelines, everything, they're gonna come back and they're gonna say. First draft of um proposal to recruit a town administrator is gonna be this and. It's gonna take X amount of hours and, you know, that kind of thing, and they they say, alright, we're gonna have you. Three candidates by, you know, October fifteenth. And then hopefully, I'll, you know, this one, and the thing is, is that you can have three great candidates. All it comes down to is who is the board gonna feel most comfortable with? You know, tha- that's probably. A big, a bigger issue. Because, you know, if you if you got somebody you can't work with or you're, they're going into it saying, yeah, I'm gonna be here a year. You know, I know I can make more money down the road, you know.
Okay, so then as far as the R F P process, is there anything you need from the board?
What I can do is I'll put a draft together and we can, I'll I'll throw it out there and you can take a look at it and. Like, once again, I'm not reinventing the wheel, this is all stuff that's out there, you know, it gets simple, in some cases is. You know, just find and replace, you know, it's a good proposal.
Okay, so it sounds like um, do we wanna do a motion to Mika? So it sounds like a a motion to. Uh authorize the town administrator to draft an R F P for procuring a consulting firm. To assist with the town administrator search.
Smooth, yes.
You got a second, Harry?
Kind of like pool table.
Well, I heard the yes from you, so it's like, is there anything else that should be included in that motion? Alright, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on that for now? Alright, real call, Alex.
Hold on, second eye.
Wait my eye.
That's a nine.
Light dry, alright, so we have the direction for that, um.
We have a funding source?
I I would recommend mine, but I'd get killed, so I won't say it.
I think we'll have to. Click at the the list and see where the best options.
Just don't want us to go through the whole process and say, oops, we can't pay you.
We can do some homework on that too. Um alright, uh any other discussion for now on the town administrator search process? Um for future agenda requests, Alex, I am not ignoring your request for the forecast, I did chat with David a little bit. Budget specific, it sounds like it's a little bit early for us to get into the details, but I know you had wanted to review the forecast, so I just wanted to clarify with you. Goals uh of what you were looking for for the forecast review, that we could do in advance of any specific budget.
Start early conversations around it.
Okay, so just a little bit of a general.
If I can just piggyback similar to, but to just kind of get out there that this is the, this is what we did at town meeting and this is what. Where we are, um and, right, and not the, not the detail, but just if if. There's not a a willingness to even consider an override, um for the voters to have the option to vote on, then we're looking at. Three million dollars in cuts or um if we are looking at an override, get a sense, start having the community, for me, start having the sense from the community. Is it a one year, we, and I'm just throwing numbers based on the forecast, three million dollar override or is. Do we wanna do a menu option, three year? Or or do we wanna go for a larger multi-year, um but start those conversations so that going into the fall and. Have a more targeted census to what word.
Like I like I mentioned during the, you gotta market it too, you gotta have some informational sessions, you gotta get the word out.
But I will say, just based on the amount of pushback that I've been getting from the public for not. Al- not allowing the public to vote on an override, um is. Uh crazy, and so, um most of my network was not necessarily wanting to pay it for an override. But saw that we needed it and wanted to at least have the option of the ballot to. To stay, um and they felt that that was taken from them, so just to start.
Alright, so a review of the forecast, just to kind of set the stage for what we're gonna be looking at and then maybe try and come up with a plan for. Communicating potential options to the community to see what direction that they would be willing to go in for a further discussion. Does that sound, okay, um we had that and let's see, um. Oh, and I did, um, did everybody have an opportunity to meet with Austin for?
He and I are still playing phone tags, so.
Okay.
Um, cause I missed him that last week with work stuff, so, but I had asked him, I know he's, um. He, I think he was around last week or beginning of this week for a bid opening or something, but I missed him, so.
No, we had to cancel the bid opening.
Okay.
Um I think the, if I remember correctly, the discussion was to hold an executive session to review the feedback. And kind of collate a a summary that we could release as part of that. And then also come up with some um points of discussion for what do we wanna see as far as. Uh you know, board interactions with the town administrator, expectations, job responsibilities, some things along those lines, is that.
Yeah, and it's only gonna help us with our search in the next per- in the next year, so, yeah.
Alright, so if everybody is amenable, I can, and or thinks that they would have their feedback ready, I could, we could plan to have that discussion. At our next meeting to get that ball rolling. Okay, alright, are there any other future agenda?
Um, we did get this, um, the um, uh town. Rutland court cases, is that something that we're gonna have on the neck, we have next agenda?
Yes.
Cause I went around all the properties and everything, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
If I may.
I don't think it's gonna be a big issue, but.
The um, the treasurer collectors suggested possibly discussing that in executive session.
Okay.
Um out of respect for those individuals that their information is not publicly shared, um which would allow the board to have a. Um more open discussion. Um but you do also have the option of still doing it in open session and just not specifically referring to the specific addresses.
Addresses, okay, yeah, okay, alright, well, we can figure out the best way, I can talk to David about that, but um either way, I think it will be a discussion topic for.
Next, next time, probably.
Any other topics for now? Alright, um. We have for our upcoming meetings, our next one is June twenty-third, these are all regular meetings, June twenty-third, July seventh after the holiday. And July twenty-first. There is no other.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Alright, motion and second, roll call, Alex.
Hold on.
Second eye.
One and eye.
That's a nine.
Ledger eye, thank you, everybody.